Say good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
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 World call, Mr. O'Hean, there. Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Bettis, here. Mr. Hudson. Everybody standing before him, it's all right. Let's go ahead. Let's believe this to the eye of the public and that it is a reason for our and to the world, which stands one nation under God and visible through the action of justice.
Truly one nation under God. We pray and think about for that. We ask you dear Lord to watch over us in these trying times. Keep us strong and compassionate on one another. Please dear Lord bless us with the understanding to take care of one another as much as possible. Keep us calm and without fear so that we may continue to do all that is required under the laws of God. Please dear God keep us together, united. Take any anger or hatred out of our hearts. Make sure that we follow your word and your scripture and teachings every day. Not just when it's convenient, but at all times when we act and when we speak. May we ensure that our words are true and our words are meant to build everybody else up. Dear Lord, you then amen. Everybody call the meetings order. This time we put on a public comment or citizen communication. There's anybody? This time I don't see anybody and if anybody else in the electronic world online. Everybody knows we are at last month, we've been zooming our meetings so that all the public who cannot attend are able to listen in and participate in our meetings. We very much encourage participation by anyone in the public, anybody in communities. Whoever it is that would like to participate, very much welcome that. And so at this time, go ahead and proceed and if there's anyone during any particular agenda item, anybody would like to speak up or make some comments, more than welcome and free to do that during that particular item. Item five, discussion possible action on approval of minutes of regular and special permission support meetings of April twenty twenty. Taking a look at the minutes, this will be the ni. Motion made by permission for best second by permission leader, all in favor? All in yes and sign, motion carries. Item number six, discussion possible action on approval of payment of bills. I did take a good look at these. They have one question for the founder's office. If you get some clarification, I noticed that there was an invoice for janitorial supplies from Green Bull LLC, it's on the second page. The invoice was for twenty five hundred. And I looked at the item and the budget and also the question is, is that, is there enough in the budget item that's listed for the fiscal year to cover that invoice? It's on the second page of the bills where it says Green Bull LLC.
Okay, I heard Green Bull. Yes, our P P T that you have in the budget and now they can come up with another time again.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to make sure because I did notice that janitorial supplies was two thousand and this is an invoice for twenty five hundred.
Yes.
So just an issue that we're on top of that, alright. Also the question that I had, any permissions, questions on the bills? Motion made by permission leader, second by permission three book, all in favor? All in that same side, motion carries. Discussion, consider action to approve my item transfers or voided amendments. Do we have any my item transfers? Moving on to number eight, consideration possible action regarding department reports. The auditor having a report. So how are we looking on our budget balances? Any projections on how we're going to turn out for the year?
As of April, we're still looking at, we should get fifty percent and everything under fifty percent right now on expenses, so we're still looking at.
Any questions for the auditor? I have questions later on, who will be in contact. Taxes, us, collector report, Mr. Zonbo is present.
Those are tough. I think you have a copy of your report with you. We're at eighty seven percent versus eighty six percent last year. But we're doing good, our collections, general, the general, we're doing good. We're the over percent over from last year. On the farm to market, we're at eighty nine. Which last year we were at eighty six point seven, so we're doing real good on the market. Are considering the fact that we're grand at this time on the delinquencies, we're at eighty seven percent. So we're doing good all till today. I mean, I think the future, but now we're ahead, we're ahead from last year, which is good for the county. And also we have received the preliminary values. I don't know if you have received them or not. These are only the preliminary values for the county for next year. We will get certified values like tonight at twenty fifth. It's only the preliminary, we have some A R B board meetings which they will contest the values of the property. Which is the deadline would be by July twenty fifth. So this is where we're going to work for the levy for the county. This is the break value for all the properties or all entities of the county, including for investment district. So this comes from the price of this, it comes from my office, from the price of the district. The city will work on your taxes and schools, we don't have any schools here, but we'll be working on your tax rates also. And the values are a little higher from last year. So we're going to do very good, the collections for the probably worth twenty twenty. I mean, we're not, valuations came a little higher from last year. So it's good news for the county. Whether we're going to collect them or not, we don't know the future, so. But the preliminary values are, we're looking a little, little better from last year.
How are the reports looking given our current economic outlook?
I collected, I deposited a hundred twenty eight thousand last month and a hundred and five thousand this month for the county. Collections are about the same as last year. We don't have too much difference on it. Considering the fact, like I said, we're still collecting that, we're still collecting some money. And plus to the first part, like you said, a hundred twenty eight thousand and a hundred and five thousand this month. So we're, we're still there, we're still on the left. I mean, is that, is that a downside or we're about even from last year?
So we we're hearing the word about, of course, how the impact of the economy is going to be on our graduations and especially the mineral values.
The mineral, we'll, we'll have to see the, the appraiser, the printer and habit, the mineral attorneys, see what we're going to be. I don't foresee anything this year, probably next year. But for this year, I think we're going to do good, I can foretell, but nobody can for next year. It might have an impact for next year, but this year I think that's just my, what I see on paper. But nobody can foretell the future, so we can, we can see. But the preliminary values that came out to be a little, little over from last year. But I believe that's good news for the commissioners, you know. And if you need a copy of the preliminary values, the price of this, I can make you copies of the preliminary values. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Zonbo.
Thank you.
Sheriff's report. Number one.
I'm reading my paper, but I have done eighteen addresses and pretty much all over the phone and for the map, and so it's been okay, I can test out, so. It's been with his permits that they need for the electricity, that's what actually needs to go ahead. With address, I guess we might show that this.
Emergency management, is there an update?
Yes, we have, we have two sites in Newell County, working on it on Friday. We have seventy nine registered, we have seventy one tested in Frere. Out of Frere, only one cannot positive. We had our testing site on Friday.
Is it here?
No, it's hard to report. We have eighty for here in City San Gabriel, and we have so far, the results are coming in, we have no positives right now. And no, the sheriff doesn't have the virus either, I found so many policies warning it yesterday that the sheriff had the virus. And no, he does not. I know there was somebody from Gravitas, of course, and that was a positive, he took that test on in Brooks County, we have that test in Brooks County, so of course it comes to us. So far, I says, Newell County has five positives. We really don't get the negatives, but pretty much everybody except for the one that we had in Cisional, but I mean this, everybody else has tested negative. You still have to wait for their results, you need symptoms or anything, and they have to come up with two negatives. La Paloma, I don't know if you've heard. They had a positive in Jimos, and so happy person from Jimos actually worked here. So they have tested the four patients she is more involved with. They've all tested negative, but we are working on a testing site for the La Paloma in that case, and you go ahead and sterilize everything. Friday, we're, we're working on a testing site for the happiness also. So for those who didn't get tested or anything, the way to go ahead and do that. And the National Guard does everything, they're pretty much, I look, keep the site, and they come and do the whole works. They don't, they don't let us do anything, we don't contact with them or anything like that, so. Otherwise than that, hopefully we stay with more negatives than actually positive, so. Any questions or anything?
Any questions?
Can anybody take the test?
Yes, if anybody, first of all, and the questions they have is, have you had any? Well, yeah, we have negatives. And you know, drain in, a dry cough, or anybody take that test. They recommend one for a household because pretty much if one person has it in the household, then pretty much everybody's going to end up getting it in the household.
About the small markets, they have employees.
Yes, they can, well, that's true, especially because they have more contact with the, you know, the public, who is the county, but it's just that. And it doesn't matter literally what age you feel, I mean, they, they're not discriminating or discriminating on any age, but if a factor amongst them, it could also. And it is a no swab, it is no swab. Just know that the blood one is a, is an antibody test. We all pretty much carry some type of a lot of virus that we've been fighting, but it's not the COVID nineteen. So do I recommend that? No. Of course not, because sometimes that comes out positive and it's a big scare for you to come out positive. But if you have antibodies, it's awesome because they pretty much they want to fight this virus. But it, it is a no swab and it's on both nostrils, real easy. You don't have to get down, you just ride through, you never have contact with anybody, you're and they don't touch you or anything like that, it's just all those one huge things, nostril. So you're going to do it through simply. I did it on Friday, we had our testing site here on Friday. I know we, we're going to the Gravitas. I know I'm going to probably get them on La Paloma and maybe make it their public for, for the rest of the people since they're going to be here. We need to do other, I want to share that we're going to do other people since I did a, a level.
Like if I had employees, what do they call it, predict replace them, district manager workers that won't have access to computer.
Right, there is a, there is a phone number where you go ahead and call and register, and then things should call you back. So if you're going to go ahead and use your phone, if you want to use your phone, try just to get through the working hours, so I can ask if you go ahead and they're going to call you back to that number. And then the results, same thing, the results, they end up, they, some take three days, some are taking five days. And but they'll go ahead and call you back on the final two numbers, they'll go ahead and tell you your results. And then they'll send you a text right after that, and that paper will give you a piece of paper where you should download and give you the results if they're negative or positive.
Exactly. Constable reports in. And we have two justices of the peace submit their reports, one of the member of the J P's for the hard work they're doing. That's J P two. Probably in part of it, and also the other one, magistrate's forty eight total. Seventy eight E P S cases. Our extended manager, manager, Mr. John Barton. And the report is included. Total nine hundred and sixty cubic yards, amen. On the April. President, any resources report? Indigent healthcare. What's submitted?
I had a total of thirty two clients, thirty of them were medical pharmacy, two of them were mineral expenses. For county healthcare, our total bill was six hundred twenty six thousand seven hundred thirty six and twenty five cents. We paid out two thousand four hundred fifty two dollars and sixty seven cents, same one's total of four thousand two hundred eighty three dollars and fifty eight cents. For money indigent, our total bill was two oh one. We paid out forty six dollars, giving us a hundred and fifty five dollars. Overall total savings came out to four thousand four hundred thirty eight dollars and fifty eight cents. Any questions?
Questions? The rubber, central service, operating nutrition, better than services. Morning.
Morning. Morning.
In April, we transported the, I thought it was six sentences. On ten turns to their medical appointments, traveled about thirteen hundred miles. And we're going to take a driver fifty four hours for all that. During April, we continued to transport vendors to the medical appointments, like we told the that the Texas Veterans Commission that we would. And other news, our grant budget was increased by thirty two hundred dollars. That's because we're not paying our drivers fifty dollars per hour. And the grant, the state new versus a hundred percent of that. We, I recorded a thirty eight year old career veteran that was approved for forty percent of the building. He was also approved for a, an eye operation, and he had the eye operation. And he can now read, so he's been through well. And we also have another career Korean veteran that was eighty two years old and is on. And we also have another career Korean veteran that was eighty-two years old, and is on oxygen twenty-four a day. He was approved for provided services. Because he can't get around very well. He also has applications for a denied that are already appealed. We now have twelve, I think, disability applications in the market.
Well, we're, uh, gonna say that's good news, um, in all aspects, you know, the helping provider there. Those two specific barriers that you mentioned, you know, that's, big thumbs up, you know, for the hard work. For them, and also, uh, congratulations on the increase of the grant budget. So you can, uh, make sure that our, our band track, which will also have these veterans.
Excellent.
You know, to, uh, veterans helping veterans.
That's right. That's what we do.
We're proud of all that y'all are doing. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve the department reports. Once you read our permission first. Second, we're pushing through all the favor. That's inside motion here. Item number nine, discussion and consideration to approve the continuation of the local state of disaster due to public health emergency. COVID-19, uh, back in March, we, uh, declared a state of disaster due to COVID. Um, and on the particular declaration, uh, we had, it would continue, uh, until. The proper authorities, uh, determined that the, um, emergency was no longer in existence. But we all know it's still pending, and it's still, uh, very much an emergency for, for not only us here in Duval County, but, uh, the entire. State, nation, and world. And so this here is, uh, memorialized, and to continue our commitment. Um, to establish that this is, and will continue to be a local state of disaster for Duval County. Um, we have here the proclamation, and, uh, as mentioned, it's a continuation. So that we can continue to, uh, have this particular declaration in place. It also helps with, uh. Any funding that we request from FEMA or Texas Department of Emergency Management. Um, they would look at, uh, these declarations, whenever they make their declarations. Any questions on declaration? There's, uh, nine questions, is there a motion? Motion to re-recommend three votes, second by Commissioner Perez. All in favor? All against inside, motion here. That's the round procedure. The next three items, uh, are to be presented by, uh, Ms. Yvette Atney with, uh, Lomestock Strategy Group. Uh, they are consultants, have been helping us with our grants and other programs, but we've been very fortunate to have their services. Uh, item number ten, consider possible action to authorize Duval County to apply for USDA free development grant. Um, so we do have to present all three of these, uh, one by one, we can have them for consideration.
Okay, uh, on, good morning, Commissioner.
Alright.
Um, on the USDA grant, this is going out for professional services for engineering study. And this is going to be for, um, streets and for, uh, rain drainage. Uh, for the street. So we actually need to get this study done before we can apply for any of the mitigation, the flood mitigation grants. So it's very important that we get this, and this is actually a free grant, so there won't be any kind of match. I think it, uh, funds up to thirty thousand for this. We are actually going through this, uh, process in the city. And we should be finalizing our, um, our, our HQs this Wednesday. To have our, our firm start beginning the process. So we want to start the ball now in the county. And the county will have their own, the city will have their own. So that is the, the USDA. The second one we have is going to be, um. A supplemental grant, which is just trying to supplement that money that's spent here in the county for COVID-19. Uh, I've talked to the auditor's office, and they're gonna go department by department. To go ahead and get any expenses that every department had on COVID-19. We'll put all that together. We're teaming up with the city as well, uh, of San Diego, because they're the county seat, and then we'll apply for that. And that is gonna be due June fifteenth. So what I've asked the auditor is, I know that sometimes the departments don't report till maybe the first week of the month, finishing off the month. So as long as we have everything by the first week of June, that gives me ample time to plug it in before the June fifteenth deadline. So if y'all have any questions on, on what's considered appropriate or not, I mean, I'm sure you know what, uh, what expenses y'all might have as far as.
I know we just had, uh, the civic center, and we had, there was a food bank giving out this, um, Friday, and I know that you know that there's a positive was healthy during that time. So I know we got the civic center and precinct three units and so forth. We had somebody come and disinfect immediately. I know we're going into the safety with the jail and, and all that. So I know that would be considered under the, you know, the COVID special, because there was a positive there. I don't know, um, we didn't reach out to Frere because we know about this testing or disinfecting. And I don't know if it was still being considered, because there was a positive. I know he's dated now, but we didn't reach out to Frere, because we didn't have that resource at that time.
So, so any, and any expenses, even if it's labor or overtime or any, any, anything will be, uh, considered under this, this supplemental grant as well.
Yeah, I mean, even if there's a question, I'll also submit it.
Right.
Exactly. Yeah, it's better to, to get reimbursed and/or get turned down if it's not. Yeah, exactly. Any PPE, uh, anything extra that y'all are, are using, please submit that to the auditor. Uh, and then the next one would be the resolution, uh, approval of the resolution for this grant through the governor's office. I think that's it, Judge, unless y'all, unless y'all have any questions for me.
Question bottom ten, obviously we've been making that a priority from the get-go. And we'll continue to do that. You can do all three at once, or if there's a question for each one.
All three at once.
All three at once. Okay, I will motion again by commercial advisor to throw by ten about the twelve. Second by question, even, all in favor? Item thirteen, consider and discuss the possible funeral, dental, and vision proposals submitted by Emeritus, as presented by Mr. Till Esquidet. Mr. Esquidet here to give us some information about, uh, dental and vision proposal.
Hello, everybody. Oh, man, I'm gonna lower it just a little bit, so my glasses won't fog up so bad. Um, this real quick, what we ended up doing was, we went out shopping for you, uh, with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Mutual of Omaha and Emeritus. And Emeritus ended up with the best prices and the biggest network that's available for the employees. And so, uh, so what we're doing now is you're shifting from what was a fully funded, where, uh, you're going, now you'll be fully funded. Okay, so all they gotta do is pay the premium now, and that's it. Because the way you're doing it now is it's self-funded, the dental and the vision, which means the county's having to pay the claims. That the employees are filing on their health insurance. So the county's having to pay the claims. So dental was about sixty thousand last year, and vision was about sixty, uh, thirty-five thousand last year. That's about ninety-five thousand dollars you'll be saving that you won't have to pay in claims, because right now you're having to pay those claims. And most of the time when you check and see, is it better to go self-funded or full-funded? What you do is you check the premiums out, and in this case, the premium's cheaper. Than what the employees are paying right now. And it's nineteen dollars, and, uh, it's on there. Do y'all see that, the nineteen dollars? Okay, let me go over it with y'all real quick. Bear with me. So, uh, the, the dental would be nineteen dollars versus twenty-one dollars that they're paying right now. And it's the same, we've set it up the same as what the employees have right now. So if you, so you know, the most the employee and the county will pay is nineteen dollars, and that's it. So I was telling the judge, because y'all don't have that responsibility no more of paying the medical claims, the ninety thousand, that y'all can even go. And pay half of the premium or one-third of the premium for the employees if you wanted, and that's all you're, you'll be out of pocket. You won't be out of pocket, the, uh, medical claims no more. So instead of paying a hundred thousand for the year, if you pay half of, uh, eighteen, uh, nineteen dollars, say, we'll just say ten to make it easy, right? And you've got about a hundred and eighty employees that are eligible. That's a thousand eight hundred you will pay once a month, and that's it. You won't pay anything else. That's your fixed cost. That's what you're gonna pay, if you wanna do that. You can go one-third and do half of that, or. And the beauty about it's up to you all to decide if you wanna help the employees or not, and you don't have to. You could keep it the same, the way it is, and they'll save a dollar still. Every month, and have the networks. And so the thing is, the county won't be responsible for paying that hundred thousand in medical claims for that year. So you'll be saving that claim, because we're pushing that responsibility now to Emeritus, not Duval County. So you got me, so that's, that's. One way to come in and save money for the county, and the employees would still get their benefits. And, uh, and Emeritus is one of the best. I mean, uh, Flaver County has them. Uh, appraisal district has them, and they're happy. I haven't heard any complaints with them. So, and what they're gonna do is they're gonna, uh, carry over some of the negotiations. Anyone that met a deductible, they'll carry over your deductible to this year. Um, also no waiting period for major restorative. So if they got major restorative work to be done, they'll pay it, you know, without having to wait, uh, six months or an eight year, a year. New employees that are coming on for, uh, major restorative, they'd have to wait one year for new employees to get the, the root canals, crowns, and all that. New employees. Those that are already here have no waiting period.
So they reached that max for the first insurance? They have additional max?
Uh, yeah.
They have, you know, and then moving out to plus eight hundred dollars, so say you probably used it. But then you don't have enough for your crowns, okay? You use the fifteen hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, who's your max on?
Your, 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 your bucket starts new, sister.
It starts new, we'll go take advantage.
Yeah. So it starts, the, the whole bucket starts anew. If you met your max with, uh, with, uh, Ameri, uh, interest, well, you'll get a new max with Emeritus. So the employees will be able to get more work done on their team, but, uh, with less premium, and the cost ain't gonna get passed on to the county. So, uh, I would, my recommendation again is that we go with Emeritus, and you, I'm already, you know, interest already knows, they know what we're doing. We could start at Ja, uh, June first. Uh, the way we'll enroll is we can do it online, or we could do it, uh, video, or we can, I can go to the, each department and do it too. I mean, you know, so it doesn't matter. We can get it done by June one. And June one, you stop the bleeding on your, uh, paying the, the claims for vision and dental. And, uh, they'll save you money, about a hundred grand, you know? So win-win. Uh, Commissioner, so I guess the next question is, uh, you gonna lay it all on the employee, or do you want help pay, you know, ten dollars for each employee, or? Towards their car, seven dollars or eight dollars towards each employee? I mean, because I mean, it, it reduces your risk by a hundred grand to ninety grand. And so, and, and the fixed cost on them is nineteen dollars a month, and that's it. And you could say, hey, we'll, we'll help you with the nine bucks, you pay ten. So nine times, say, a hundred and eighty is what, uh? Nine, that's seventy-two, carry seven, that'll be what, about, uh, help me out, man? One eighty times nine is, let's see, seventy-two, carry seven, nine, one, uh, a thousand six hundred about approximately? A month versus you not even having to pay claims or anything, which monthly would run you about twelve grand a month.
Now, is that monthly or five weekly, because you pay twice?
No, it's a monthly rate. And you just divide that by two. So I'm just saying, y'all gonna have to do it. I'm just throwing it out there, you know, on behalf of the employees, you know, and, and like I said, your fix is, your cost is fixed. You're not paying no more for that. So I mean, that's your call, and, and I just wanted to lay it out, and that's my job, at least.
We appreciate it.
We got it. Okay, we'll get started June first, is that okay? Alright, it's an honor, Commissioners. Nothing, congrats on your account on coronavirus. Y'all are doing good, man.
Is that including vision?
I'm sorry?
Vision.
The vision as well. And the vision's discounted, the, the vision's cheaper as well than what you're paying now. And so here's the other thing, as we go along. There might be a not, not, there might not be a optometrist or a dentist on the network that someone seen. So this is where they come tell me, and I'll go and try and negotiate with the dentist and the Emeritus to get him on the network. Okay, so if y'all need that help, I'm here to help you do that.
Thank you.
Alright, God bless you.
Appreciate it. Item fourteen, consider approval of contract for veterans' van drivers to be paid by veteran assisting grant retroactive to April ninth, twenty twenty. This includes the, uh, veterans' increase that we just, uh, received information by Royal. Uh, and so the van drivers here, Mr. Tebaldi, and Juan Regis, uh, have been helping us out with all the veterans in the county. And so this here, just make sure that we get them paid by that grant. Hundred percent. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Hayes, second by Commissioner Zigo, all in favor? Uh, again, same time, motion here. Uh, item fifteen, we, uh, we have about six bids, so I'm gonna go ahead and move that to the end, so we had to open all those up and. Uh, review those, um, considerations today, so go ahead and move it to the end, so we'll move on to item sixteen. Discussing, consider for acceptance, the appointment of temporary county assistant honor, Miss Anna Martina for fiscal year twenty twenty. Until September thirty of twenty twenty, submitted by Judge Alden Iberson, that you're, can you guys say to your president, I want it?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Congratulations on your work. I know it's a difficult time. First, let me say that this is to see you all. It's, uh, this is the first time I've been back, I guess, in a while. And, uh, you all have already met her, when you come over, and you all have heard, it has been my intent to, uh. Come over and make sure to introduce her to everybody individually. Of course, Corona got in the way. Um, I'm excited, if, if, uh, if you haven't met her. Uh, she is, obviously, she has a master's in Billings Administration, focuses on accounting, uh, and her undergraduate degree. I think she has the temperament, uh, for the office, so I think, I'm excited about that. I think she has the temperament uh for the office, so I think I'm excited about that. She's a great addition to the staff that already have it. I'm here uh on this because as we continue to talk and as you all continue to give grants that you are, it's so important, I'm not saying anything, our problem is the external audit. I don't know how many years it's taken, even if I know maybe this last, I don't know the last time we had the external audit on time. That's a problem. It's been a problem before Judge Sanders was here or me or whatever and there's, I don't I don't think this is about blaming anybody. It is blaming. But when you jeopardize your grants because the external audit is not finalized, that should not happen. And that's what I'm trying to address here. Whether it was Matt Galison or Anna Martina, and always more boy, including Ernest Gaston, they've been telling me we needed another set of hands in the office. And this is what this is uh to address because we're behind. Apparently, that's part of our problem. Training is part of the problem, so we're trying to address that. And and I really believe that uh this is a temporary thing from here to the end of the budget here. It doesn't cost any additional money uh to the county, but more importantly, I think this will help us uh really get into trying to get this external audit on time. You know, one of the things that I think, and I don't know maybe uh Marisa can address is, part of what the office should do, I think, is is have sort of like a, like an inner audit or you or you're checking with the departments that you go along. I don't know if we do that at all.
Uh that would be uh like an internal audit. We haven't been able to do that because we're short in our office, so we have to work for it, have to do the departments to go audit, make sure everything is being covered, but but that's what we do so that we can do that.
And I think that's an important function because I think if you get the office, this office, to plan the budget with the department head, to help you help and and educate those that may not know the budget as well. That way you can plan that before and if your inner insight, you have an inner audit where you're following it closely, it's gonna get the external audit off time. So anyway, and and this is what it is. So I I signed an order, I had it here, it's going to the wall. And I'm here basically to explain to you why we're doing it. Uh I think this uh will almost, I hate to use the word guarantee, but almost guarantee that our audit is gonna be sooner. Now, I don't know how we're doing uh at on the audit right now, the external audit right now. But if not this one, for nineteen, hopefully twenty, we can get it off time. That's where we're going, so uh I'm asking you to approve it. Like I said, it's not gonna cost anything additional and it's from within the budget of the office because of what was budgeted or the uh or the previous auditor, and Matt was here, we're still talking about that money. So there's uh this will help us hopefully start putting, like Marisa said, they've been underhanded it. As you already know, we lost one grand. And again, it's not, we can talk about, there's no sense in talking about who's to blame. That shouldn't happen. Not, it shouldn't be put on hold and this will ensure that we don't. Uh and Judge, I know you're hard, but in case you want, maybe at the end, a short on the court on some of the things that uh on the two twenty-nine, if you want, I'll be more happy to just.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
All right, so uh well, I've uh in favor of this, uh never assistant auditor, but since we have the money in the budget, uh and also we can resell. Commissioner Healy makes the motion, second by Commissioner Perez, all in favor? Uh again, same time, Commissioner Perez. Discussing possible annual or no ability to six cent propane and rental, this is a renewal, um ninety-dollar fee every day over here for the six cent. I hope. I'm sure we can, or second by Commissioner Plaza, all in favor? All right, the last one is uh open sealed bid from the county road one three eight phase two canyon project as advertised. And discussion possible actions to award to the bidder submitted bid is the best entrance to be walking in and also offers the best value to be walking in. Author is coming towards the final as a terms, uh said moving bigger and moving matter incident there too, if necessary. Uh we have six, um which is more than I think we've ever received. Um the last time we prepared our bids, they would receive two bids. Uh and of course, you know, you have the fiance one and you got the three models paid. Uh so at this time, we can go ahead and open these up and pass them around for everybody to consider. And then uh take note that we uh did and price involved. First one is from BK baby senior coding from San Antonio, Texas. Again, all these are sealed, have not been opened, that's the word. He this is a bid, total bid was a hundred and seventy-two thousand and five hundred dollars. They also included the project preferences. I wonder what to. Uh first one, BK was a hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred. Next one is from Tom Oaks, uh Allos, Texas. Take a good proposal. It does have the bid. Total bid for Tom Oaks, a hundred and eighty-three thousand and seven hundred and fifty. Next up is Resuma Construction LLC from Berrito, Texas. This is not on seal, but it was taped. Where's Zuma Construction? Uh their bid is two hundred and fifteen thousand. Next up is Mala Nava Construction, San Diego, Texas. Mala Nava Construction bid is ninety-eight thousand, I'm missing a few. How much was that? Ninety-eight thousand. Next one is Ace. Ace Company by the San Antonio. Total bid, two hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty. Two hundred and forty-three, eight hundred and eighty. The last one here is to create incorporated in the process. A little bit, a hundred and thirty thousand. We got them all opened up, we got the numbers. Um you don't have to select at this time. For the record, it's also good to uh take a look at the proposals. Carefully analyze the best interest and best adding for Duval County. Uh so also uh come back for a special meeting, determine what we would like to do. But we also have to make sure that we're within budget and uh it's a big consideration.
Honestly, I think that there's a discrepancy of the prices, right?
Yeah.
And they don't look like they're bidding for the same job.
Yeah, there's a big discrepancy. Uh we can also make sure uh clarify any questions, if there's any questions out there with any of the bidders. And providing the information and see what we can clarify. If you're uh, if you're not what you want to do and table. Motion on the table?
What's the motion on the table?
Uh the motion on the table is the table. Uh I'm just happy yet. All right, motion by Commissioner Threeville, the table, second by Commissioner Reaver, all in favor? All right, uh Judge, if you wanted to provide an update on the two twenty-nine, this report.
Real quick, they they could do, real quickly, I just wanted to tell you all that seems we are not becoming these, I've been doing Zoom cases, so you have continued to do cases here in the county. The first step was to really, I don't know how many American does uh on the jail population, we addressed that quickly, trying to minimize obviously the risk to your citizens of how many you have now.
You have like eight, seven, eight.
So we we really addressed it quickly. Uh we just had court left uh thirsty. Now, the what I really wanted to tell you is we're we're doing that in a pretty enough pace to try to get back into the case. But one of the things that's coming up is how quickly are we gonna start having jury? And I'm gonna reach out to the judge, were you on that webinar on Friday?
Uh I believe it is.
The off, the one, the off-reading time?
The OCA.
OCA, yes. Well, one of the issues, uh I don't know if you had a chance to tell the Commissioner, but one of the things that I'm gonna have to do is we're gonna have to do an operating plan on how are we gonna go from here? And what OCA is telling us is all of these judges have to meet with the county judges and their director of health to how are we gonna go forward? Because as you can see, everybody's complying with the space. Or if you do a jury trial, how are we gonna do in the courtroom? For everybody's shoulder to shoulder, we can't do, there's no way we can do more deer in the courtroom. So those are the issues. How are you gonna do it with the, and by the way, this isn't just uh here. How are you gonna put fourteen people in a jury in a little room where you can't even comply with the spacing requirement? So it's a serious issue and how do you move your cases forward for your people in jail to have a jury trial? And just to give you a sense, they're talking about maybe some of these counties that we're gonna have to go to the school district and say, then does your auditorium to do more deer? So that you can space them out, like for example, we have one that puts fifteen hundred feet uh back home uh at the middle school, for example. Oh, you can get a hundred people probably or do it there. And how do you do the trial? You know, they've been talking, well, maybe maybe you can have the jury sit in the gallery and you don't have the public there. It's not open to the public other than by Zoom, maybe we comply that way. And you can have the jury in the gallery. Now, all of that has to be with whatever the county wants. And it's gonna be important because they're talking about should there be a nurse? You know, checking everybody, how are we gonna address people that are coming in? So that's coming, so I'm gonna be reaching out to see how employee all is gonna, how we're gonna address things like that so that when? And we don't even know if it's gonna be uh June first, but this is to, we're not gonna be able to do any jury trial until this is in place. And even though some of these things are like, it it's something simple, but imagine if you had to go do it at another party or at the gym or whatever. I mean, you have to take court reporter, you have to take security, how do you keep the public out over there? I mean, it's, so we're gonna have to need a time, that's what's coming. But all all of this to say that we've been trying and we're gonna continue uh doing, picking up on the videos so that we can continue. There's been cases that have been resolved, I've been signing signing orders and making motions and stuff like that, doing most. But I just wanted to let you know that we are working and trying to address the most pressing things. And trying to delay the ones that are not as pressing, but we're getting ready to increase. So whatever you all, I mean, if there's anything that the county specifically is, I know tax cases are important. I think that we, this is where you're the client. Uh we need to push those things for like your revenues and we're ready. I mean, there there's not a reason for us not to be able to address those things that are uh revenue generating. Any questions?
Yeah, I'll be here. No question.
As soon as this is over, we're gonna, the same schedule. And uh one of the things, just to leave a question for scene. When it's a non-jury week, we've been putting cases till Wednesday and we've been able to resolve most of the dockified Wednesday. Usually by noon, we've done our dock. My intent is when we come back to put up cases in the afternoon to make them effective stay the whole weekend. I think by doing that, we'll be able to catch up hopefully with the work on pace. And anyway, I just wanna tell you, total, uh we worked hard this past year. Uh I know back home, uh the three eighty-first, which is uh just a start, they resolved six hundred pieces. We uh six ninety last year. We did uh six hundred, just over there. And we did over four hundred here, a couple hundred in Duval. We did twelve hundred cases as, and I'm still learning how to do it, but But I do have to say this, you all have an exceptional, Mr. Prusoff. Uh, really, uh, incredible how, how, she does her juries and all that. It makes it really easy for the judge, and uh, so I just want you to know, I think that should be, uh, something that I should mention. Thank you, Judge, thank you all, thank you, Judge.
Judge, Judge, real quick, I got your name, just for information, only for yourself and the other Commissioners to be aware. Uh, we put it down to Civic Center for, uh, seven or fourteen days in Australia. County shop, we closed for seven days, to further notice, due to COVID-nineteen, we have that individual tested positive. He communicates a lot with the county shop, one of my secretary works with the county agent at the Civic Center, and worked with me half the day. So we sanitized the whole Civic Center, county shop, county vehicles, uh, nutrition program vehicle. Uh, just for your information, that way you all know, if you ask any questions. That's where we go for, except the truck pickup, the road truck, we picked up today, and we picked up on Friday. I got two guys coming to pick it up today, going home, then the other guy will be there Friday, picking it up, going home. The two will get backed up on the car, so, uh. And I'll discuss some other issues with you later, throughout the week, I'll, I'll. Thank you for the update, um, we're praying for everybody, and Johnny was just positive, and, um. I think that's best to take those precautions, you know, quarantine, according to guidelines of the CDC, and and also make sure everybody's getting tested. And on the PO, we didn't call for a PO, because it was an emergency to sanitize, as soon as possible, and it was a weekend, so. Maybe we'll take Commissioner's port, go from there. Alright, keep up the good work. Alright, everybody continue to be safe, uh, take care, take care of everybody else as well, and do what we can. We're gonna get through this, and stronger after this, as we know, and more united, thank you, everybody.
Judge, if you have any questions, let me just decide, or how they're going, call me, this is bad, I pretty much answered. Any important call from Garrett, you, or anything like that, you know, uh, like I said. The test case, we've been going really well, and we didn't really come to them, so just good things. I think that they came in more positives, like the one on Friday, I think we got a positive, like in the morning, so I think. All of it, I mean, this ended up coming, but we had only about forty people scheduled, we ended up getting about eighty people tested, so. And you can call right here on that page, it doesn't, I mean, it's twenty-four hours prior to the test site. And, but you can call that same day, that same day, you can go ahead and get tested. So does that, if you missed us, I called yesterday, doesn't matter, they'll look at you next, look at you next.
We very much appreciate you saddling the team, uh, the E M S and fire, and departments, uh, all. Law enforcement, it's been helping out, uh, innovation to the Texas Department, emergency department, and the National Guard.
National Guard's been awesome, they, they know there's nothing, they're the ones that actually do everything, we just, we're just there for the facility, pretty much, the E, uh. ASD number one, very candid, I used this one here in San Diego, because it's the way, and they come and. The day before, I expected and see if it's good, game, name, whatever, uh, so they've been, they've been awesome.
And we have a site, and then do this, alright?
I know this happened, you can go, go to the site now.
That was good, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, so I hope everybody had a blessed week. Have a wonderful day, Judge.